Okay, I believe we are recording.
Good evening and welcome to the April 7th, 2020, meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen. Starting off, we'll go to Vinnie Fontaine, Veterans Agent for the Pledge of Allegiance. Vinnie?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, every liberty and justice.
Thank you, Vinnie. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live on tape and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It'll also be available for online video on demand viewing at wrps.rockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrps.rockland.com for information. Okay, guys, if I could just ask, if you're not specifically talking, if you could just put your phone on mute? We've got a lot of feedback in the background. I don't know who that is specifically. First on the agenda will be community announcements. Doug, anything?
I don't have any formal community announcements, but the one thing I think I will say is I just want to thank the community for staying calm during this emergency and for following all the guidance we've received from the state and the federal government for social distancing, staying home. And I just really want to thank people for, again, for staying calm, following the guidance, and we'll get through this as a community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, next on the agenda, minutes, open session minutes of March 16, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Sorry. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And myself. That's unanimous. Okay, open session minutes of March 31st, 2020.
Make a motion.
I have a first, so I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second. Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan? Fire?
Yes.
Okay. And myself. Unanimous. Okay, thank you. Moving on. So, we're going to go with a COVID-19 update. We're going to start with the Board of Health Agent, Delshaun Flip. Del, how are you?
Oh my God, I was muted. I want to, I want to thank you guys all for tonight. And so, I want to give the update. As of today, there are 25 cases in the town of Rockland. Two of those cases are in one household. We should see that household drop off by next week. They should be cleared. As one had a positive a week before the other, so now they're both at the same scandal. We're supposed to be seeing numbers increase as numbers decrease. The more they, the more it increases, it'll start to decrease the curve, they say, flatten in the curve. I know that there's a mask guidance out there for people to wear masks in public. So, if you go to a convenience store or whatever, I know it's hard to find masks, but I made a mask myself, I mean, for my husband and my son. I just took a t-shirt, cut the sleeve off, and you just take it, put it over your head, and it acts like a mask. So, you can just, just a creative way of covering up while you're out there in public. I just lost my earring. I need a hairbrush now. So, even though they say to wear masks, they also still want you to make sure you practice social distancing and no social gatherings, more than 10 people. The public really, really, really needs to pretend like everybody has COVID right now. That's the safest way, and that's the best practice right now, is just to believe that everyone that you walk past has COVID. With that said, the Rockland Board of Health will be opening the recycling center on every Saturday, Sunday, and Monday from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. to drop off leaf and brush only and recyclable items only. That means you could bring cardboard, plastic, anything that doesn't cost. We're not taking any bulky items there. So, again, the hours are from 11:00 to 3:00, Saturday through Monday. The attendants will be there checking IDs. Again, this is for Rockland residents only. To, because I know a lot of people are out there cleaning out their garages and doing yard work. So, we just opened it up, so it would be a little bit convenient for everybody. And that's it.
Thanks for, for Deli.
No, thank you. Thank you, Deli.
Thanks, Deli.
Rich, anything? Rich Penny?
Nope. Thank you, Deli.
Okay, so I do have a couple of things. One, Deli, I just want to thank you for, for working with us and providing that information on a day-to-day basis as to the amount of confirmed cases within the town. I asked Doug at the end of last week if that was something that we could do. And I think, you know, my thought process behind it was, I felt as though, from what I was seeing, was that people weren't really taking it seriously, and they had this kind of mindset that, you know, it can't happen here. And as they start seeing that, in fact, it is happening here, I think people are starting to take it a little bit more seriously. Specifically, Deli, I think last week you talked a little bit about the rules of what you could and couldn't, what information you could and couldn't give out as changed to HIPAA. Obviously, no names, no addresses, and just strictly the confirmed number of cases is all that I think would be appropriate to report on a broad scale to the town. And I think it is, it is causing people to start taking it a little bit more seriously as we go further throughout this pandemic. So, I appreciate that. We thank you for working with us.
I might. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, Fire Chief Scott Duffy.
Good evening, everybody. Right now, you know, the Supreme Court's saying reporters last week, you know, we're continuing to respond to many calls for the coronavirus. What we're finding is, is we're finding a lot more people saying that they have tested positive than, than what's being reported. So, I think the reporting that Deli gets is a little bit delayed, which is okay. We're treating everybody as if they are COVID-positive. So, you know, we're doing what we need to do. Our personal protective equipment, the PPE, is sustaining us right now. I think we have probably two or three weeks left to make it, to make us, to take us through. You know, that being said, you know, we're already in conservation mode with it, and we're utilizing, you know, single-use PPE multiple times. So, hopefully, we'll get through this. The good thing is, is that I think the curve has flattened out and that, you know, instead of seeing a big spike in cases, now we're just going to have kind of a low, slow roll through it. So, let's keep it that way. The patients that we are experiencing are pretty sick, so, you know, I asked everybody to take the curious into social distance.
Okay. Mr. Mullin, any questions?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just have one question, Chief. Is there anything we can do as a board, like, as a town, to help you with the situation?
Not unless you can override the federal government, who is, who is taking this stuff as a coaster customs. But no, it's, you know, we've got calls, calls out to everybody. I have orders placed, which is good. So, you know, we're already in the queue to receive everything. Hopefully, a shipment of surgical masks shipped yesterday to us. I hope to see that in the next couple of days. So, no, you know, we're going through the channels, and we're taking measures every day to try and get what we can. In the public, it's been awesome. We, you know, you know, every so, every so often, you know, somebody will knock on the door, and they'll have a package of N95 masks, so surgical masks they found somewhere in their house while I was shopping. So, we've been greatly appreciative of that.
Okay. Rich, anything?
No. Scott, thank you very much. If there is something that we can do, please let us know.
Thank you.
Kara, anything?
No. Thank you, Chief, for the update.
Mr. Ryan?
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Larry.
So, Scott, I did have a resident reach out to me the other day, and I'm not sure if it's something that will actually come to fruition, but they seem to have, think that they had an inside track at acquiring 2,500 N95 masks that they would like to donate to the town of Rockland. So, I'll follow up with that resident, and I'll put you guys, you obviously in the police department, first on the list to acquire those, if she can, in fact, get them. So.
Yeah, that would be huge. 2,500 would put us way over the top on this, and, you know, keep us from having to go to some drastic measures. So, thank you. Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll follow up with the resident, and we'll go from there. Again, I'm not entirely sure what method she is going about getting them, or if she's actually going to be able to, or if she'll be shut down in similar ways that you guys have been and other municipalities have been. But if she's able to acquire them, I'll make sure that she knows that you guys are in desperate need. So.
Excellent. Very good. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thanks. Next on the agenda, Chief Wollan.
Good evening. Thank you for the update. I just wanted to, again, thank Chief Duffy for being the central point for all of the supplies. We're going through more and more of the masks now, because we're requiring the officers to wear them whenever they interact with the public, whenever they get out of the car. Deli and I spoke today a number of times regarding them wearing the masks on details. So, we've been trying to keep that down a little bit to reserve the supply, but unfortunately, we're going to start going through more and more. So, the public, as the chief said, has been very good. We've had masks donated directly to the police station, but the kind that we can't have enough at this point. So, a couple of things, as you may or may not have heard on the news, recently we had a very tough hit-and-run pedestrian accident the other night, Saturday night, on Market Street. The victim was med flighted. Fire Department did an amazing job stabilizing him, because he had seriously life-threatening injuries. And because of the Fire Department's work and the air wing getting him into Boston quick enough, he did survive. He does have a number of serious injuries, broken bones in a number of places. We did, it's been a very difficult case, because the car did take off. And as you can imagine, right now, at nighttime, there are not a lot of vehicles on the road. We did tow a car, a truck from Brockton Hospital, brought it back to the station, processed it, and found that that was not, in fact, the vehicle that was released. But because of a citizen tip in Rockland, we do believe that we now have the truck in the Sallyport at the Rockland Police Station. The detectives have worked approximately 20 of the last 24 hours putting together a search warrant with the state police. The search warrant was signed electronically late this afternoon, and they will be examining that vehicle in the morning. We do believe that we will have charges pending at some point tomorrow. And it just still amazes me in this day and age, if somebody would take off with a number of cameras and everything out there, and they almost killed this guy. But through some great work through the Rockland Police Detectives, we're able to track it down. We have the vehicle, and we're pretty sure we're going to be able to convict this guy. So, I do want to just mention for the selectmen's discussion tonight, the possible closing of Reed's Pond Park and Hartza Park. We're still having kids gather at Hartza Park and Reed's Pond Park. There are a lot of people gathering and still fishing and feeding the ducks, that sort of thing. So, for your consideration, if you decide, we'd be happy to enforce the closure of those two areas. But beyond that, the town's doing a pretty good job. We still have a lot of people using the rail trail, and we'd like to see a little bit more space there, but we understand there are not a lot of places for them to go. So, we're doing well at the PD. We have no one out sick at this point. Our school security officer went for a test on Monday. We're hoping that comes back negative, because he has had a lot of contact with members of the department, but we'll know Thursday or Friday of this week. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Rich, any questions?
Hey, Chief, I'm the school resource officer where he's had the test. Has anyone been notified that he has been in contact with, and have they gone into isolation?
His family has, yes. He's, he's in isolation from the family. And if I misspoke, it's the school security officer, not the school resource officer. So.
Oh, okay. It could have been me that was, okay.
Yeah, he technically works for the school department, but he normally reports to the police station. However, once all of this started, we stopped him coming into roll call and into the building. And I, and I thank God we made that decision, because he could have infected more of the members of the department. So.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Kara?
No, thank you for the update, Chief.
Mr. Ryan?
I'm good. Doing a good job, Chief, as always.
And Mr. Mullin?
Well, I just, I'm actually have one follow-up. Oh, one follow-up issue. You mentioned Reed's Pond. Like, I was actually out and about the other day, and I noticed there was actually quite a few people. I'm actually hanging out there with a cruiser, actually across the street at the old, at the old, like, I think Kia Motors. So, I feel, oh, you know, to restricting access, you know, to Reed's Pond especially, oh, you know, oh, you know, for however long you do. I just wanted to throw that out there, because, I mean, I just, oh, I mean, I just have, like, I just happened to drive by at a time, and I saw, like, a bunch of people there, and I really don't think they had any overarching purpose, really, being there. I'd be open, oh, you know, to restricting access based on, oh, you know, how the park department and other folks feel.
Yeah, well, thanks, Mike. We'll take that up a little bit later. We have the two people from the park department. We have a park commissioner, and Peter Yule Superintendent is on with us as well. And I think they were prepared to present to us what our options were, what their request would be for the, for those two parks, anyway.
Sorry, Mr. Kim. I jumped the gun.
No, no, no problem at all, Mike. No, the chief brought it up, so it was a good spot to start talking about it. But there has been, a lot of people have reached out to me about people gathering at Hartza Park and playing basketball. And, and, you know, the governor said, get out and walk around and go for walks and enjoy nature, but, you know, respect the social distancing guidelines of six feet. You know, playing basketball five-on-five, there's no social distancing going on there. So, that is definitely not adhering to the governor's message. So, so we'll revisit that a little bit later. Chief, obviously, you're invited to jump into that conversation when we bring parks on the agenda.
Thank you.
And then, Chief, also, like I said to Scott, if I'm able to, if that resident is able to acquire those 2,500 masks, obviously, you guys would be on top of the list as well.
We appreciate that. We'll take everything that we can get right now, because we're starting to go through them more and more.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Keep up the good work. Stay safe, guys. Both of you. All right, next on the agenda, Veterans Agent Vinnie Fontaine.
Thanks for letting me speak tonight. So, I've been handling any emergencies come through from veterans and veterans' families, trying to support them financially, working with the state. One of my issues was on the veterans that we do take care of on a monthly basis, of them getting, being provided enough food. So, we do have a few food pantries that we set up. But one of the things that I worked with Jen and Peggy on in the last couple of days is, we're going to provide free meals a week, starting next Monday, for the veterans. I think we have about 30 to 40 veterans that we're going to provide these meals to. That way, we know that they're actually getting food, and they're not going to deplete any stock that they have in their own house. So, those are a couple of things that we're working on. About all I have. So, thanks for letting me speak.
Ms. Nyman?
That's great. Thank you, Vinnie.
Mr. Ryan?
Find out where we can donate jackets and things like that to veterans. To call.
Oh, well.
I have, you know, some jackets, you know, clothing for, that's very good, good shape, that doesn't fit me anymore. You know what I mean? I want to donate them. I don't know if the veterans, you get to say, well, veterans, I've got neat clothes or not.
Vinnie?
Well, I, I guess I can try to figure out how we can do that for the exchange of the clothes and whatnot. So, let me reach out to you tomorrow. We'll have a talk.
Bye, Vinnie.
All right, Mr. Mullin?
I don't have anything. Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Penny?
Vinnie, thank you. It's, it's great that we're going to be able to, working with the senior center that we're going to be able to supply meals to the veterans. So, hats off to you. Thank you.
So, Vinnie, just a, just a question, as far as the meals being provided, how would be, what would the method be of delivery or transport?
All right, so, all right, so what's going to hap, what's going to happen is Peggy and her, her crew, her staff is going to be making the meals at the senior center. And I'll actually start delivering them on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And we'll be utilizing the van that we have to get them to the houses.
And you have, you have the necessary PPE to make these deliveries?
I do.
Okay. Okay. Sounds great. Keep doing a good job.
They be number one.
Absolutely. Absolutely. For you and for the, for the veterans as well. So.
That's correct.
The update. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, next on the agenda, Council on Aging Director Peg Brian. Peg?
Hi. Can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay. Okay. So, we've been working strictly on getting the meals out to the seniors. Last week, we sent out 300 meals to those that service through Old Colony Elder Services. They are going to provide me with more masks this week. I asked for 24 at least, because we have 20 drivers. But we're actually losing some of our regular drivers, because they're getting nervous about going out and delivering the meals. So, the SIR team has been stepping up and helping out with the deliveries. I can call them at the spur of the last-minute moment, and they're right there to help me out. If anybody has services from Old Colony that are not receiving meals now, they can call them and get on the nutrition program, and that way, they can be added onto the list. They're adding people daily to us. So, the counts are going up on a daily basis. And I'd like to thank the drivers in the SIR team for going out there and doing all this for us. It's just huge. So, and Vinnie, we're working with Vinnie now. The girls in the kitchen have kept everything clean, sterilized. They're wearing their gloves. They're doing all the precautions that they have to do. So, we'll be cooking the extra meals, which will be fine. The girls that I have in the office that are not there are working on things at home, newsletters, menus, and things like that. So, we're all keeping pretty busy. The custodian during the day is actually, he's cleaning. There's just the four of us in the building, so there's not much that he has to keep up with. But he's doing a lot of maintenance in the building that's needed, painting. He's doing all the wall, painting all, repainting all the walls. He's getting all that done. So, that's where I stand right now on, on everything.
Okay. Mr. Ryan? Larry?
I said, didn't you hear me?
We hear you now.
Oh, yeah. Great job, Peg. You're one of the best.
Thank you.
Mr. Mullin?
Oh, I just want to thank you, Peggy, and all of your volunteers and the SIR volunteers for, oh, really, everything you're doing, up to do with the reach out to seniors to make sure, oh, you know, they're healthy, that they have meals. It's incredible. I just really want to thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
Mr. Penny?
Peg, thank you, and to your staff and the volunteers. Thank you very much for everything you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Ms. Nyman?
Peg, do you need any volunteers to help deliver the meals?
Right now, I'm all set, but if they want to call and leave their name and phone number, but I've got a quarry, everybody, that goes through the center.
Makes sense.
But on that, but on, the other thing I just should add is, if anybody needs anything from me, for them to please call the seniors center from 8:00 to 1:00, and then email, or email me at rocklandseniors@yahoo.com, and I will get back to them by anything that they need.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Kara. Peggy, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate your help. Appreciate your staff. Continue reaching out, obviously, to the seniors that we know are housebound, and just find out, try to assess what their needs are as well. And we'll have you back, hopefully, in a few weeks to give us an update. In the meantime, stay healthy, you know, stay safe, okay?
Okay, thank you. Same to you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda, Parks Commissioner Chairman Rich Burrow and Parks Superintendent Peter Yule. Gentlemen?
Good evening.
Good evening.
As far, right now, all the parks in the town fall under, according to the governor's rules. The two places, Reed's Pond definitely has a lot of people down there. I tried to go through, I drove through it this afternoon myself at 5:00, yesterday afternoon at 5:00, today at 5:00. There's a lot of people down there. There was a husband and wife having their dinner down there last night, watching, sitting there, watching. There was kids feeding the duck. There was a couple of people fishing. Same thing tonight, lot of cars, but they're separated from each other. Hartza Park, yes, the basketball has become a problem. Peter had tied the nets, zip-tied the nets. They cut them and continued to play. So, I had conversation with Peter today. The only way we're going to end that is we take the hoops right off the backboards. Hartza Park does have a lot of use. Been checking, trying, like I said, tried, good days, I try to drive through and check it in the morning, mid-morning, afternoon, evening, and see what's going on. We get a lot of families down there walking, taking their dog down, running the water. One husband, wife, and child were up there picking up rocks for a project. One guy was doing the disc golf. It'd be funny, Sunday morning, I went around, took a drive around, and I had to turn around at the ball fields at Spring Street, because there was four or five cars in the middle of the parking lot in a circle, and there was woman had chairs out, talking to each other across the parking lot, just so they can stay in contact. So, they're out there, they're getting used. You know, right now, there, there's no violation as far as the governor's orders, because you can be outside and be at the parks. I just don't know if we want to shut them all down. If that's the case, when the parking track is filled with 15, 20 people, and that's all loaded, what do you do? So, I mean, right now, we're not in violation of anything, and, you know, run around, tell people how to do it right. It's up, up to you guys, whether you want to go any further than that. My, my issue, Rich. All our, all our organizations, baseball, softball, they're all shut down till this is done. There's no high school. Everybody has plans in place, and they would like to play, but we do not know if and when that'll ever happen. So, go ahead, Pete.
No, my only issue is, the first couple of weeks when this started up, it wasn't too bad. But now that the weather's getting warmer and better, like you said, we had zip ties on the nets, they were cut the next day. And the fields are closed down, but people aren't adhering to any of that, the signs, the playgrounds. I just, today, I saw, I saw a couple in there with a couple of little kids at Hartza Park, and we've got that thing caution taped all over the place. So, I don't know, maybe the answer is chaining up a couple of the areas from 8:00, from dusk to dawn, or, but I can't stress enough to all the leagues. I know most of them have emailed Richie back, baseball, softball, saying they're, they understand until May 4th, until the powers that be tell us we can open them. But I know there's a couple of leagues that still have plans on going out there before May 4th, and they've got to understand that the only way we're going to kill this thing is, is social distancing and staying home.
Well, there's no league, no leagues in the town are going on the field, so it's clear. And I've talked to all of them. So, nobody's going on any fields. I've talked to every organized league, youth league in town, and they're all waiting for the go-ahead from us. So, they won't, they know that they can't go on the fields, so the field is shut down. You might have four or five kids get together and practice, but that, that, I don't know how you start. So the field is shut down. You might have four or five kids get together and practice, but that, I don't know how you start.
Okay, questions from the board? Mr. Mullin?
Oh, I mean, I hear everything that's been mentioned, you know, I mean, I know we're like a balancing act because we do have fields. And, you know, if people use them, oh, you know, really, like really social distance. Oh, I think that's a really good and healthy thing, you know, from like a very leisurely casual point of view. But what I do worry about personally is, oh, you know, is it basketball, like and then a basketball? Like I still have an issue with folks, oh, like really congregating at Reed's Pond, I don't have any idea why I do, but I do. And, I mean, I would, and I mean, I'm not, like if we go down one by one, because there are some open face fields that, oh, like if people are at, I think that's okay. But then there were, then there were other areas that, you know, if I had to say I would, oh, I would have an overarching, oh, policy not to have them accessible, but like, you know, I could be going down a crazy road. So I'd be interested to hear what other folks, I think including the chief and others have to say about it.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Penny?
So I do think this is going to be something that as the weather gets better and better, we're going to see more and more. I actually was at Harts of Park on Sunday and saw people out on the field, running around even though the signs are up there. My, it's going to be very, very difficult, I think, to enforce shutting, closing all the fields. I literally think it could be a full-time job for the police trying to enforce that. Secondly, if people want to go out and as this gets, as the weather gets better, they're going to. If we shut down the fields, they're just going to find somewhere else to congregate if they truly want to do that. As long as I think they're practicing social distancing, I don't know if we want to go down the road of shutting things down. Because Rich, you even said, you know, so that you shut down the rail trail, you shut down this, how do you enforce all that? And then where do they go? Do they then start walking just on the street? And how do you shut that down? I do agree with Mr. Mullin on the basketball part, I think just because of the close contact. You know, maybe we do look to take the basketball hoops down and discourage that. You know, and anything else that might encourage real close contact. But, you know, I think, I think if we went down the road of trying to close the parks, I think we'd open up a whole other, a whole lot of other things. Just my opinion.
Right. And if you, if you read the governor's orders, I mean, when it first came out, ball fields and stuff are okay as long as it's under 10 people and you do social distancing. And don't get me wrong, I don't think they're all doing social distancing. But you go down, when I went down the Reed's Pond, they were definitely split up. There was parents with their kid watching the ducks, some feeding the ducks, some fishing. Harts of Park, yeah, the basketball is an issue, but there was also other people enjoying it, walking the trails down with their dogs, their kids. So it's going to be a hard choice to do it.
Okay, Kara?
I agree. I think if we can somehow take the basketball hoops down, that would limit some crowding in that area. I don't know if we're able to increase patrols in the park, just kind of show a presence. Maybe people will abide by the social distancing guidelines. But yeah, I don't think shutting them down right now is where we want to go at this point.
Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, shutting them down wouldn't be the best choice, but it's an option. But Richie says, Richie says we're not violating anything, then go along with Richie. He's on top of everything all the time. So if the police admit a normal round, I don't expect the button, a normal round. That social distancing violated grossly, you know, they could either, I don't know, they could make a decision. You can make that decision, Richie, whether that authority is, you don't need us to tell you which parks to, if they need. So I just think that you guys are on top of it. Stay on top of it because you appear to be, so I think it's their decision. Let Richie and the park guys determine, you know, that they're obeying and if they need us to, to publish. We could do that. But I'm sure between them and the police and whatever, they can get it under control.
Thank you, Larry. Chief Fuellin?
All right, thank you. And listen, I hear very clearly the board's view and clearly the park department view about not closing things down. I just want to let you know from a police department view, I think we would be better off doing that. And let me just explain why. And I had a lengthy discussion with Deli earlier today about advisory opinions versus mandates. When you advise that people not congregate, the police department have no, has no authority to go in and tell people to spread out, to leave, to do anything like that. Until and if and when you make the decision to shut something down, we have no authority to tell the public to move along. And if not, we will do something. I.e. take them into custody, issue a fine, issue a citation, do something along those lines. So it's wonderful to sit back and say that we hope people will do the right thing. But I think we're in some desperate times. And I can tell you that maybe at 5:00 PM on two given nights, there's not a lot going on in Reed's Pond Park. But I can assure you at other times, in the morning, lunchtime, later in the evening, there are a lot of people gathering, congregating that are much closer. There might be some other things, nefarious reasons that people are hanging out in there. Same thing with Harts of Park. If you shut the park down, we can then tell people, listen, move along, go home, do something different. And until and if and when you do that, we can drive through, but we have no actual authority to tell them or to do something to enforce your rules and regulations. So I just wanted to record that we're in some really difficult times. And I understand you as elected leaders have a hard decision to make. It's easy for me. As the police chief, I can say, I want you to lock this place down. You lock it down, you tell me to lock down the town of Rockland, we will do that. But until you do that, we don't really have a lot of authority other than asking people to do the right thing. So. Just my suggestion, I understand you're in a difficult position, but my suggestion would be to at least close maybe Reed's Pond Park on a trial basis, let Harts of Park stay open, close the basketball courts. And if you close the courts, we can then go in and tell people that they're trespassing, we need you to move along, period. So it's, we're in difficult times, strange times, and God bless you guys for being the elected leaders. I know it's not easy.
Would you put up barricades in front of the Harts of Park, like to drive in there so that people can, or Reed's Pond also. The entrance so that people can't go in their park, at least maybe eliminate it to, as a walker, walkers through or something.
Listen, I used to live next to Harts of Park, so I get there's a lot of walking trails, there's a lot of things that can still be used in Harts of Park. Reed's Pond Park, on the other hand, is not near as big. I don't see the need during this pandemic for the people to be in there feeding the ducks and to be in there congregating. And again, there's a lot of nefarious things that go on in Reed's Pond Park. So if we had the opportunity to shut that down, that would be easy. We could put some barricades across the front, Peter could handle that. Highway could handle that. And then we could enforce it. I'm not saying shut down Harts of Park necessarily, because there are a lot of walking trails and people could be separated in there. Just maybe step A versus doing the whole thing, that's all.
So, okay, I just want to go, I want to go to Mike Mullin for a second and then Chairman Furong, I'm going to come back to you for a rebuttal, okay?
Okay.
All right, Mike Mullin?
Yeah, I just want to say, like, I agree exactly with what the chief just mentioned, Harts of Park. You know, I mean, I think there's a way to keep it open, you know, but to really limit or restrict what's happening on the basketball court there. But I really think, oh, really keeping the open spaces there, oh, like is important. But Reed's, and you know, I mean, even though it looks like you're there, Mr. Chairman, right in front of it, oh, in your picture right now. I do think, oh, you know, I mean, I really don't, like as the chief mentioned, see a huge, like purpose or like a flow of feeding ducks right now. And I mean, obviously, I'm being a little, oh, broad in how I'm describing it, but, you know, I mean, I think, oh, you know, certainly based on, you know, the chief's recommendation and what him in, oh, oh, really, what he and his department have seen there. Oh, you know, a day in and day out, oh, you know, I mean, I think we would be wise to take his recommendation. And, you know, with the closed down public access, Reed's Pond.
Chairman Furong?
I mean, I agree with the chief. There could be issues and things going on down there that shouldn't be. I mean, they've been going on. When I came on the park department in the 90s, this is an issue that was always out there. We shut it down for a while, opened the gate back up and they went back in. What we found out then is a lot of people parked across the street at the gas station, at the store, no walkover. So you'll have a lot of walkers that are still going to go in there, they just won't be in there with their cars. And people that don't want to do, don't want to be in there to do the wrong thing, they just won't go there. It's very easy to do. We're just going to put a chain up. We have a chain in place. We've had it up before. That would be an easy one to do. As far as Harts of Park, we can take the nets down. I talked to Peter today. But the only way, only option for that is to take the hoops right off and they won't have any basketball court to play on. I wish it was fenced, but we're in the process of fencing it and we could lock it up, but that's the only.
Rich, I was going to chime in on that.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Peter.
Go ahead, Pete.
If I could chime in on that, the fence company's supposed to be back down there this week. I will call him when I get off the air here. And I'll call him again in the morning because the pipes have been set for a few days. So if he can get the fabric on, that'll solve the problem because, and then the police can go in and do their thing because they're locked up and there will be a close sign on the court. That'll solve that problem. If they can't get out there this week, then we'll pull the rims off.
Okay, so, so I think, I mean, I'm hearing everything that everybody's saying. And I'm thinking that collectively, we're kind of thinking of taking the rims off if they can't get a fence up by the end of the week. I agree. I think we should keep Harts of Park open, keep the signs up on the field, just asking people, as it pertains to social distancing, to try to comply as much as possible. I don't have a problem with people going to take a walk. Then we walk, that's what the government's, governor's recommendation was, was to get outside and, you know, just socially distanced. And to the chief's point, it's not, it's not an order, it's an advisory. It's a, you know, it's a recommendation. So it's not enforceable by law. As far as Reed's Pond goes, you know, I think I kind of go the other way on it in a sense of, I'm not against a family going down there that's been living in the same house together the whole time, having a picnic on the water. I think, I don't know, maybe if it'd be complicated, if we were to set some sort of a capacity and if the police see it above what they think that, whatever that capacity is, then they'd be able to clear the park. I don't know if that over complicates things, but I think otherwise we maybe get it over the course of the next week or so. And if we have to come back and make a decision on it, we put it out there about social distancing. People might see this meeting and we make a call on that. But maybe we also just restrict the hours of which Reed's Pond Park is open. And maybe we say 4:00 PM, it's closed up. So that you're not getting that after-work traffic.
There are hours at Reed's Pond Park now, so we do enforce it after 9:00 PM, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, if we move it to 4:00 PM so that we're not getting that after, after the work, you know, whatever the people that might still be working, you know, that after-work crowd coming down there. So maybe it's just during the course of the day and maybe if you see people there after four or five o'clock in the evening, you know, they're there for more nefarious reasons than feeding the ducks, you know?
As I said, these are difficult times. We'll follow whatever, whatever direction the board gives us. I would just finally say that people could park their car across the street, as Richie said, and take their walk into the park, do their things. But again, we'll follow whatever the board votes and decides in your recommendation. So we'll enforce it.
Can we ask Doug, Doug, who has the authority, needs to have the authority to make decisions? Is it the board's selection or the park department? And does the Reed's Pond fall into the public's? Is it their decision? I mean, I'm not that I care. I think, I think it's probably wiser to follow the chief's recommendation and put a chain up at the pond and leave, and leave Harts of Park open. They're out there every day. They know, they see, they're the best judges of that, I think. And I, you know, we got John LeWell, he makes a lot of good decisions. I think he's making them now. So if we, if we follow that, I think we'll be, we'll be safe with the public too because what goes on at Reed's.
All right. So, so Larry, so I'll entertain a motion that, that we act on Chief Fuellin's recommendation, if that's what the board is looking to do.
Recommendation to what?
Mike, my only question on this, does this actually?
Hold on, one at a time, one at a time. Larry, your phone is breaking up just a little bit, so I'm going to go to Rich real quick.
Sure.
Rich?
Sorry, the only question I have, should this actually come from the park commission versus the board of selectmen?
Well, I mean, it's a recommendation from, from the police chief, so that's public safety. I don't know, Doug, do you have, is there, attorney prefer to you on, is there an opinion on that?
What I was going to say was, to be honest, I think the group that probably has the most authority in our public health emergency is the board of health.
Yeah.
But ultimately, I think if you all vote it, you know, if Rich concurs and you have a consensus and the selectmen want to vote it and the parks commission wants to vote it, I think you're fine, you know? I'd have to like check the charter and check the deed and see, you know, which exact parcel they're in custody over. But I do know that the board of health probably has the most legal authority. But I think if you all agree, you could all vote it.
Attorney Clifford, any comments?
I could just add quick before that, that there's been a declared state of emergency. So I think the executive board, being the board of selectmen, has authority now. Just my two cents.
Okay, attorney Clifford?
I agree with the chief that you do have the executive authority to take this step. And I think, I also concur with the chief that to the degree that we can give his officers clarity when they respond to these situations, I think it helps a great deal.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to vote the recommendation of the chief of police.
Make that move.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All those in favor? Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And myself. And that recommendation would be that Reed's Pond Park would be closed. The chain would go up, no vehicles would be accessed. I assume, you know, people walking through might be acceptable, but, you know, the chain, no access as far as vehicles are concerned. And the hoops would come down at Harts of Park and Harts of Park would remain open to general public otherwise. But also, you know, I think we should look at the playground though too, down at Harts of Park. You know, I've heard through the grapevine that people are just, I know you guys did a great job with caution tape, putting that up. But people are just stepping underneath the caution tape and playing on the playground down there. So. Maybe that's something the chief, you guys take a look at. If you see somebody playing there, that's included in this as well. Because that was part of the shutdown. Okay, and I'm in favor as well, so that's unanimous.
Mike, can I, can I add something? So obviously, we also have basketball hoops up by, by the middle school. My guess is if they don't, if they can't play down at Harts of, they end up going up there. We've got some other playgrounds. Do we make this where basketball in playgrounds in town are off limits? And that gives the police more, I guess, more authority to, to do something if they do see people playing in any of the, the basketball courts or the playgrounds?
Well, I think the playgrounds.
Harts of Park?
Yeah, to your point, Rich, I think the playgrounds were actually part of the governor's shutdown. The governor had ordered that all playgrounds be shut down because you can't go through the sanitation process of a playground every single day after every single, every single use. And I think basketball would be the same thing. I mean, you have a fence around, you know, the one at the, at the high school. But yeah, I think if, if we were to include, you know, if the police department sees anybody at a basketball court that they ask them to leave, that that is. you know, if the police department sees anybody at a basketball court, that they ask them to leave, that that is, that is going forward until we can get, get to a point that we can get past this, you know?
The middle school court's locked up already.
Yeah, I haven't seen anybody, I've driven by there, you know, a few times already, and I've seen nobody in there, so, so I don't think that'll be an issue. I, I know there's a basketball court behind the eastern school, uh, I don't know if people are back there, I mean. Look, I, I think if we give the police the authority to remove them, if they see one person shooting at a basketball hoop, or, you know, one or two people in there, whatever it, it is what it is, just shooting the ball, I, I, I don't know if that's necessarily the biggest thing, I mean, they could be family members for, for all we know, but if, if you see, you know, a full-on, you know, five-on-five breaking out, or a three-on-three, like you see in front of the Abington Police Department, uh, you know, I think that's something that, that should be shut down at this point.
I agree, and my guys are basically experts at using discretion, so, um, they will continue to do that, and, and I appreciate the board's clarification on this, so, thank you.
All right, I just wanna make sure that, uh, the, the other members of the board, uh, are okay with that being added to the recommendation. Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, and my, and myself, okay. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
If I could, Mike?
Yeah, go ahead, Pete.
If I could, so just to make it all clear, so I, I'll shut down Reed's Pond tomorrow, throw a chain up, throw the proper signs up. As far as the court at Harts of, can I have a little wee leeway in the morning to get hold of the fence company? If they can jump on it and throw the fabric on that, can we do it that way instead of pulling the rims off?
Yeah, Pete, that's fine, you don't, you don't have to pull the rims off, because, you know, what will happen is if the police go by and they see somebody there, they can ask them to, to leave. So I'm sure they'd increase their patrols in that case. So you can leave the rims up, if you can get the fence in there, you can get that locked up. And obviously, to, to my point, uh, if the police are increasing their patrols in that area, and they have the authorization from the board to remove people from that area, if they, they see fit, then, uh, then it shouldn't be an issue with, with taking the rims off or leaving them up.
All right, now, I'll let Doug know in the morning after I talk to the fence company, if that's cool.
Yeah, and also, also stay, uh, between yourself and Richie, obviously stay in close contact with Chief Wu Owen as well as this goes forward. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, uh, now on the agenda, vote to adopt temporary emergency H R related policies. Stacy Callanan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I think I'm gonna begin the policy discussion.
Oh, Jen, okay.
Um, and if I may take just a brief moment while we have Peggy and Vinnie on the line, I just want to acknowledge, you know, all staff really truly are going above and beyond, um, but I have to let the board know that Peggy and Vinnie are showing up five days a week, um, on-site and working with some of Markland's most vulnerable population. They've not only been on top of everything, they've truly been a step ahead, um, in so many instances, and so I just wanna give them a little extra recognition, um, this evening.
Thank you.
So on to the, um, emergency human resource policies, um, that we're presenting this evening. Uh, Doug, Stacy, myself, and council have worked collectively on them, and there are four that you should have in your packets. The emergency reassignment of duties policy, bylines for telecommuting during the COVID-19 crisis, return to work protocol during the COVID-19 crisis, and the emergency modification to the family medical policies. I'm gonna go through each one, I, if you can bear with me, I'll try and go as comprehensively as quickly as possible. Um, so these policies were drafted to accommodate, um, efforts to protect the health and safety and encourage efforts to maintain the curve, um, as well as comply with state orders, guidance, and guidance while maintaining a continuity of operations, um, to the best of our ability during what's federal, state, and local states of emergency. All policies, um, aren't, will be in effect until a vote of the Board of Selectmen terminating the local declaration of emergency, and they also should be noted that are not, they're not setting a precedent, practice, or expectation for which same or similar conditions will be addressed in the future. So the first policy, um, I will explain is the emergency reassignment of duties policy. That's, um, will be a reassignment to assist with the essential duties, um, and those essential duties are defined as anything necessary for the public health and safety and continuity of operations. So by no means that one role is any more important than another, um, but is, is fitting that need. Reassignments will be made following consultation between any combination of the town administrator, assistant town administrator, um, human resources director, and the department head. The reassignments will be temporary, and the reassignments will be made with the same general category, within the same general category of wor, of work as the employee's current position. So I don't know, do you want me to take questions for each policy, or do you want me to go through them all and take questions at the end?
All right, you can go through them all, Jen, and we'll take questions at the end.
Okay. So the guidelines for telecommuting during the COVID-19 crisis, um, they're applicable to all staff unless an employee's position requires their presence to be on-site, for example, police and fire staff. The expectation is that staff are working while at home, um, working and available between the hours of eight-thirty and four-thirty Monday through Fri- Friday, either by video, phone, email. We are holding, um, weekly department head meetings and COVID task force meetings at a minimum, and often staff are connecting via video and conference calls as needed throughout the week. I think we've had some pretty good success with that. Other communications are also being explored in order to, in an effort to keep the staff in communication with each other and their department head. And we at a town hall have taken all reasonable measures to ensure that all staff are best equipped to be able to telecommute during this time. The return to work protocol during the COVID-19 crisis, um, really follows the CDC's guidelines. So any employee who has tested positive, who has been tested and tested positive may return to work after, um, contacting human resources and their department head, but must have had resolution of a fever without use of fever-reducing medications and improvement in respiratory systems, and have had two consecutive, um, COVID-19 test results within twenty-four hours. Now, acknowledging that that likely might not be available right now, um, the alternative would be that all symptoms are completely resolved or fourteen days have passed after the onset of illness, and that would include the resolution of fever for at least three days um, without fever-reducing medications and improvement in respiratory symptoms. For those employees that have not been tested, they may return to work after at least three days have passed, um, without a fever and fever-reducing medications and improvement of respiratory symptoms, and at least seven days have passed since symptoms first appeared. And then the last policy is the emergency modification to family and medical leave, um, and sick policies. So first want to make a note, um, that currently all employees are being paid, um, their usual salary. If between now and May fourth, an employee is unable to perform their work duties because of a COVID-related illness or necessity to care for an immediate family member, they will not be charged, um, against their sick time. Following May fourth, um, the options that employees will have available to them there are the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, or the F F C R A, and this would allow an employee up to eighty hours of paid leave for COVID-related absences. If, um, an employee utilizes their Family First Coronavirus Response Act, um, relief, they may then utilize, um, their, any, any accrued time, so any sick time, vacation time, or otherwise. In the event that an employee has exhausted all of those options, they may use sick time and borrow against future accruals. And then lastly, employees have, um, the option of utilizing the modified emergency F M L A expansion leave. And in some, this enables eligible employees to take up to twelve weeks of emergency F M L E, F M L A leave if unable to work due, um, in order to care for their child, for a child under the age of eighteen as a result of a closure or place of care due to the COVID public health emergency. The initial ten days are unpaid. If available, an employee may utilize accrued time that they have for that first ten-day period. After the ten-day, if they go beyond the ten-day period, they're entitled to two-thirds of their regular rate of pay for the number of hours which they would have regularly worked, and that's up to two hundred dollars per day or ten thousand dollars in total. Employees that utilize the emergency F M L A are required, um, to provide as much notice as may be possible to, um, town hall and are required to provide status updates, um, during the course of any period of that twelve-week period in which they are utilizing the F M L A. And that is, um, all the, those are all the policies.
Okay, thanks, Jen, uh, Mr. Mullen?
Um, so I know, uh, oh, like everything in general you outline makes perfect sense, whatever we, oh, like a lot of other cities the town's doing for the employees right now too, so, um, they all make perfect sense, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Penny?
Uh, Jen and Stacy, yeah, it just, it seems like a, a very common sense approach, um, to these policies. Um, I, I commend you guys for, for, uh, doing this and getting this together, and, um, just thanks, I, I think it will, uh, will be beneficial, um, for the town and for the employees, uh, if they do have to use it.
Ms. Nyman?
Makes sense to me, thank you, Jen and Stacy.
And Mr. Ryan?
I'm in total agreement.
Good, thank you, all right. Uh, Jen, Stacy, I appreciate it, thanks for pulling this together. Uh, I, I thought you presented it very clearly to all the employees, so that, uh, I'm sure there'll be, uh, minimal questions following this, but, but if there are, obviously, they can reach out to, to you, Jen and Stacy, uh, for any clarification. Um, it, it is, it does sound pretty standard to, to what some other municipalities and, and some other businesses have been doing. Uh, but I appreciate you guys coordinating this effort and presenting it tonight, thank you. Okay, uh, next on the agenda, uh, general update, Doug Lap.
Thanks, Mike, and I just want to thank, uh, Jen and Stacy for all their work, you know, and they worked closely with town council on this. And Jen made it seem really simple when she just explained it, but believe me, there was hours and hours of work that she and Stacy uh, went around and around on this and worked it through with town council and had many drafts, so this is, these are very thoughtful documents, and they do follow the, the best practices, so I want to thank both of them for that, it's important. Uh, we all, as a team, we've all been trying to keep abreast of all the changes that have been happening, um, not just at the federal level, but especially at the state level. Uh, there have been a bunch of, um, laws that have passed, uh, that have given the flexibility that we've been talking about from the previews we've had recently. And I did send you, uh, that Department of Revenue, um, bulletin which summarizes all the different, uh, items that were passed in the most recent bill, and, uh, when I'm done, I think we should touch on two of the financial ones, um, that you've asked about in the past. Uh, one regarding, uh, the assessing department, Deb can speak to that, and the other regarding, uh, due dates uh, and potentially waiving interest on tax bills, and Judy and Biz are both on the line, uh, for that. Uh, one broad thing I, I meant to talk about at the last meeting, and I, and I forgot, was just the communications that we've been doing for the public. Uh, so we have a ton of information available on the town website, which I hope you're all, uh, viewing and the public views. Um, you know, we have everything dated, so people can start at the beginning or just start at the, the most recent information. I think the last time I checked, we had over twenty-two documents up there, uh, in two different languages, and they're everything from, you know, notices from the town, um, advising them of what we're doing, or making resources available uh, to the community, all different types of things, as well as links, uh, to other resources. So I, you know, encourage people to, to check back to our website frequently. We also put on there, your suggestion, Mike, was, uh, that red bar that has the current count of confirmed COVID cases in town. And when you click that, there's also a link to a really good map, uh, that our I T director, Gino, found from the state that, uh, maps it throughout the, the state by county, does some data on cases, and then there's even other tabs you can select for national and international cases. Then we've also putting a lot of information out on social media, on our Facebook and Twitter pages, uh, so trying to keep all that information, you know, current. Um, if you have any, if any of you have any suggestions about the communications that we're doing, you know, whether you want to have more videos, we only did that one video earlier, um, the information just changes so quickly, I'm just reticent to do that because as soon as we put a video out, it could be out, out of date. Um, but I, I'm certainly open to suggestions on, on any other types of communications, and it could either be during this meeting or at, at any other time. Um, but maybe if you don't mind, Mike, I'll just kind of segue right into Deb, um, in the assessing department, and she can talk about a recommendation she has uh, for the board tonight.
Go ahead.
Hi, how are you all this evening? So, uh, first, first I want to say to you all that, um, the assessor's office is, uh, pretty much business as usual from our remote locations. Um, we're able to return phone calls, um, we're, uh, we're returning emails, we're getting our, our, our U S Postal Service mail, we're getting, um, mail from, from Judy Hargins Dropbox. Um, but, um, we, um, also want to, um, you know, we really want to ask the Board of, um, Selectmen, uh, myself and, um, the Board of Assessors to, um, consider implementing, um, the local option to extend the deadline on, uh, property tax exemption applications. The, um, the normal due date is April first, we have about maybe fifteen people that didn't return, um, exemption applications this year. So, um, I would hate for any disabled vet or, or qualifying senior citizen not to get their, um, exemption this year, so, um, in order to do that, I would ask you to, um, with the local legislation on, uh, the Act to address challenges faced by municipalities and state authorities from COVID-19, there's section ten A, section four. We, we can change the, um, local option, um, due date, we can extend it all the way up till, um, I get from April first all the way up to June first. So I've been in touch individually with the Board of Assessors, and it's our recommendation that, um, if you would, we would like that extended to June first. So, and so no one, so nobody, um, doesn't get their exemption this year.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Uh, any, any thoughts from the board? Mr. Ryan?
Uh, really? I'm all set.
Okay, Mr. Mullen?
Yeah, like I just have one question, like I'm, uh, I'm very open, um, to the whole, uh, flexibility, uh, but just in terms of the exemptions, Deb, would you be able, um, to just outline specifically what the exemptions would be for? Uh, like are they open space, are they farming, what?
No, they, they're, sorry, they're property tax exemptions that qualifying senior citizens, disabled veterans, blind people, yeah.
Mr. Penny?
Deb, I, I think this is a great idea. Um, I, I think it would be, uh, beneficial to those, uh, to the residents, and I'm all for it.
Ms. Nyman?
I'm for it as well, thank you, Deb.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion from the board to extend the date to June first.
Mr. Chairman, before you vote, I, I just want to make sure, there's, there's a number of options that are included in the new legislation. So Deb, we're just talking about the option to extend chapter fifty-nine, section fifty-nine. When you have the fifty, yes, chapter fifty-nine, section fifty-nine, from April first to June first, correct?
Exactly, yep.
Okay, so that, that should be the vote of the board.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I have a first, or I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Mullen?
Yes, I just have one, I just have one question, Doug Lap, but is this, I mean, is this reasonable, I mean, oh, you know, I mean, as you heard, like, it makes sense with all of us, but I mean, it seems reasonable.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with this recommendation, uh, completely, yes, thank you.
Uh, I'm a yes, I'm sorry about that, yes.
Thanks, Mike, uh, Ms. Nyman? Thanks, Mike. Uh Ms. Diamond.
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan? Larry?
I don't know where I went.
Yeah, you're good, Larry. I had you muted. I unmuted you, sorry.
So Larry, is that a yes?
Yeah, it is a yes.
Okay, thank you. And I'm a yes as well, so it's unanimous. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Mike, can I, can I jump right back in again?
Absolutely, Doug.
Thank you. I just want to make sure if going back to all the personnel policies that uh Stacy and Jen discussed, did you guys take a formal vote on those? And if not, if you want to just take one vote uh to adopt all those policies, that'd be great.
I'd like to stand a motion.
I'll move.
Have a motion or a second?
I'll second it.
Uh all those in favor, Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And myself. That's unanimous as well, Doug.
Great, thank you. Now, I just want to, I just want to make sure um that Judy is still able to hear us because she's on audio and not video. I'm gonna unmute her. Um Judy, can you still hear us?
I can.
Okay, great. So um if I can, Mike, I'd like to go to the last thing which we spoke about at the prior meeting, uh which involves some of the flexibility the state has uh now passed into law that would allow, you know, not require um but allow extensions of dates for excise taxes and uh property tax um as well as interest and penalties. Uh so I'll turn it over to Judy, and and I should say that we've had a lot of discussions um as a financial team, uh and we're all in agreement uh with Judy, but I'll I'll let her take the lead on it.
Thank you, Doug. Um so as of recently, the legislation's coming through um to giving communities the option to extend the real estate tax bills from their May first due date to June first. Um and there's an additional um suggestion to waive any interest fees um on excise tax bills. They also mention utility bills. Um any bill that existed after June tenth, twenty twenty. Um that includes all of our excise tax bills, which which had a due date of June, of um March twenty-third. Um did I say June tenth? I meant March tenth. Um we've gone back and forth, which town has um in the, in the entire state is going back and forth each time with this. Um I would like to reiterate what I said in the past is that I believe that the fiduciary responsibility that falls on the town rests on the revenues that are generated by the town. Um so this is not an option that should be taken lightly. Um I do understand, for instance, just to give you an idea of the seventeen thousand motor vehicle excise tax bills that went out in February that would do on March twenty-third, two thirds of those have been paid. Currently, we have an outstanding balance of almost five hu- four hu- well, four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Um the interest on that today would be twenty-two hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty cents. If we waived that to June thirtieth, that figure comes up to fourteen thousand six thirty-seven ninety-two. So it's relatively significant that we're waiving um those dollars. The idea um, the idea of moving the tax bills out to June first is, I think, the bigger of the two issues. Our tax bills that are due May first, we have always given the residents an eight day grace period, a seven day grace period. So we've always moved it out to a week away before it will start to accrue interest. Um so that being said, we're talking about a three week period of pu- putting it out to June first. The real estate bills, as I had um mentioned before in a, the previous call, are largely paid through escrow. Those monies have already been set aside by the large, the largest population of the community by virtue of paying their mortgages. Um so those monies have already been segregated and are ready to go on May first, and they're already starting to come in from the big lenders um like your Wells Fargos and your um and your First Nationals. Um so I I I think for the most part, because the majority comes in in that fashion, and there is been pretty significant up, upstep in the online banking as well. Um I would, I would hesitate, and I, and in talking with all of our financial people, we're all on board with the same idea that I think staying the course is the way to go. Um I think that the May one bill should stay the May one bill for real estate. We do, we have this seven day grace period. I think for motor vehicle excise, we should maintain status quo with the fees. What I do recommend is to be a little bit lenient with sending out demands. We have a twenty dollar demand fee for non-payment of a motor vehicle. Um typically, those go out anytime between fifteen to thirty days after the bill has not been paid. My recommendation is to potentially utilize that as a means of giving people some semblance of a break in that not slapping the twenty dollar demand fee on a late motor vehicle bill and maybe extending that. Um I am certainly amenable to anything that the Board would like to do or thinks otherwise. Um again, with the fiduciary responsibility, it's a tough one. Um my heart says otherwise. My fiscal responsibility says we need to keep the town running, we need to stay solvent, and we need to be able to do the things that we're, we're, we're doing, which is maintain a work staff, maintain a town, a, a town facility building for people to be able to, to keep the town running in a fashion that the mode of operation is not disrupted. Um that being said, on the less fiscal side, we are, we have not missed a beat with the the uh mail slot. Um everything that's coming in, including building permits, um abatements, uh census, business certificates, they're all coming in and funneling through the box. And Susan I has been a tremendous asset in distributing those throughout and making sure that community development applications and the like are all being, you know, filtered throughout the appropriate department. But um for the most part, to get back to the bigger issue, I, I do think that um we should maintain status quo and continue with what we're conducting business as we have been um moving forward.
Okay, uh Doug, you had mentioned before, uh Judy is speaking for all the entire financial team and yourself on this matter?
She is, you know, this is very hard, you know, um let me just mute someone here. This is, it's very hard, but we are, you know, we are in full panic mode with the budget and with our revenues. And so we're just, we're trying to keep things uh moving. And uh so this is a, this is a, a, the group's recommendation, all of us, yes.
I'll uh I'll take a temperature of the board on this. Uh Mr. Mullen, your thoughts?
No, I agree exactly uh with the sentiments. Oh, oh, like Julie, Doug, and the oh, you know, and our financial team. Um uh you know, I think, I mean, obviously, we as uh like a town have obligations in this fiscal year and the next fiscal year. And you know, oh, we have to do everything that we can to maintain, I can, I, you know, ensure that we continue those. So I think what was just outlined by Judy and by Doug, uh you know, what really makes sense and is oh, in my opinion, the best of a very difficult situation, so.
Mr. Penny?
So um i- in, in this is difficult. So yes, we do have uh a fiduciary responsibility to the town. But our, our responsibilities go beyond just fiduciary. Um what I would, what I would like to at least uh talk about potentially leaving the bills on the due date as they are, but waiving any penalties, anything for, for a longer period of time. The reason why, so we've got, uh I know that in the unemployment right now, there are delays because the, the uh the number of applications going in or or uh are bogging the system down. We have delays in the stimulus package going out. Now, on the new SBA that rolled out on Friday, uh they're having major difficulties in there. So what's happening is people losing their job. There is money in the system for them. Uh they're just waiting for it. So what I, what I would hate to do is have people incur a additional fines for late penalties just because they're waiting on the federal government to get the money out to them. So I I would propose that, you know, we leave the bills due and the date that they are in, those that can do the, uh pay it, pay it, but that we extend the um uh any penalties out, whether it's thirty days or forty-five days, somewhere in that ballpark. Uh it's just my opinion.
Uh Ms. Diamond?
Um I'd have to agree with the recommendations put forward by Judy and our financial team. Um if we could be a little bit more lenient with those demands and kind of work with those who have hardships and can't afford to pay them right now, I would hope we could work with them to figure out a plan going forward.
Mr. Ryan?
Put the uh financial team's position, I think that it's very, very that uh the town goes on, I just, there are always things that can be worked out in the future. If uh somebody gives up on a hardship or somebody gives up for the problem. Individual cases could be handled like they always happen and, and uh let's not, you know, we're behind the eight ball now, let's not put anything else in our way, you know?
Thank you, Larry. Uh so, you know, I I agree with the recommendation of the town, but I, you know, I also agree with Rich that that I think we should you know, make every effort we can uh to allow the residents to, to have the funds available to make the payments and not incur any any fees because they're waiting for the federal government to, to get the money to them. Judy, what would the impact be of that if we extended out uh the, the timeframe for which uh penalty or fee is accrued?
Well, it's
Not waiving it, not waiving it at all, but just extending the timeframe for which it, it, it comes down.
Then you are waiving it essentially because if, if you, if you move your due date out to June one, you're now not, you're, you're missing a month's worth of interest on with, with one delinquency. And so therefore, you're, you're doing i- if you keep the bill at five one and waive the fees, it's the same thing as moving the bill out to June one. It's, it's, there's, there's no difference. Um the one thing that I will agree with, and, and the one thing that Rich I have struggled with tremendously is that it is a pretty significant interest rate that's attached on to a real estate bill. It's, it's twelve percent, it's fourteen percent interest. Um after the, the bill is passed due. That is not anything that, that the town adopted. That's a mass general law. It's twelve percent on motor vehicle. Um I've often used, when I, when I've coached people, um and trust me, this is not a black and white area. We have worked tremendously and zealously and very hard with people to put them on payment plans. Um nothing has to be paid in full at the, at, by May one. Um we have a tremendous amount of people on payment plan. Um that being said, that has saved a number of people from going into tax title. Um the payment plans that, that I work with, with people, and it, and it is just that, it's very individual approach. It's not, it's not one size fits all. And I, and I'm not trying to to make that sound that way, that this is the way it's gonna be and this is the way it has to be. We look at every situation individually, and we have any number of people on payment plans that are paying on a regular basis to chip away at their real estate bill, to chip away. The only, the only stipulation for motor vehicle is that the motor vehicle bill has to be paid in full, and that's, that's a registry regulation. Um so we are certainly wa- by waiving the demand fee and backing totally off with tax takings and not being zealous in that respect, and giving people the opportunity that there are so many folks out there that don't realize, oh my gosh, I can pay four hundred dollars a week and chip away at my bill. I don't have to give you the whole twelve hundred dollars all at once. Um we have found that, that in educating the public and in helping with that, and in concert with what Deb is doing of extending the abatement process and the exemption process to those individuals that are entitled to it but have missed the deadline. Um ours is a, ours is a difficult situation in that the, the interest is, is, is significant. Um but I have to also I al- also, you also have to pay attention to the fact that the majority of the residents are paying on time. Um the majority of the monies are coming in on time. Um and we certainly without, without, you know, beating the horse, um we are certainly more than willing, and I think anybody that's been in contact with the tax office would, would elaborate and, and and say that we are in fact totally um considerate of each person's specific needs and what they do, and we work very generously on attempting to make it more palatable. And, and work with them in a fashion so that they are able to pay their bill, and the town is able to move forward in, in a suitable fashion.
So Judy, the only thing I'd say to that is, keeping the bill due date on May first, I believe that what, seventy-five or eighty percent of the homes in town uh get their real estate taxes paid through uh automatic deductions through their bank, well-controlled?
Those monies have already been taken out of there. Th- those monies are well-prepared by, by year end, um to tell you the truth, Rich, by calendar year end. Um once we drop the actual bill, every escrow agent in every bank knows what to expect to pay for February and May. And they set that aside for the individuals that have mortgages to pay that.
Right, so, so by keeping the, by keeping the date May first, all those payments come in. So we're talking twenty percent of the, you know, of, of the homeowners in town. Um now, out of that, do all of them, if we were to, if we were to keep the bill due at May first, but it, but no penalties incurred as long as they pay it by the end of the month. How many of those people are gonna still pay on May first versus the June first date? You know, my, my only concern is, we're now on April seventh. Um when are these people going to get their first unemployment checks? When are these people gonna get stimulus check? And, and that's why, you know, if we, if, if this was if this was May, I mean, uh March seventh, I probably wouldn't be saying the same thing. I'm just concerned, do these people get their money within three weeks and are they able to pay it? And if they can't because they're waiting on the federal government, you know, do we hit them with interest?
I couldn't agree with you more. The timing couldn't be any worse. Um a- as a town, as a community, um a lot of individuals, a lot of people pay their May one taxes with their federal income tax refund. Um those, before they extended the deadline, I'm pretty certain that most of those people have gotten their refunds back. Um it, it's, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough call. It's a very difficult, it's, it's a very difficult one. I, again, am amenable to what the Board would like, would choosing of the Board, but um I also I also can't dismiss the fact that there's a, a, a fiscal responsibility that needs to be met, and that it's again, it's not a one size fits all kind of thing. We can't, we can't, we can, we can do i- it's a lot, it's a lot of revenue that, that would be lost um by virtue of going in the other direction of moving the bills out to June first or waiving any of the um, the fees because the real estate bills are the larger of the two bills, obviously. So hence, the interest is larger. But again, it doesn't mean that if 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 you're on a payment plan and you can make and you can chip away at it, the interest that bec- that does accrue becomes incrementally less. I I hear you, I hear everything that you're saying, I feel it. And it it is, it's it's hard to compartmentalize this and say that it's 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 down to numbers when it's not. It's also down to the fact that there are a lot of people that are in a situation that may not be able to to pay their May one bill. The one thing that we talked about last time was the benefit of the double bill. It was out in December, February and May were there, there were no surprises. You had your February and your May bill on Janu- on December fifteenth. So ahead of the game, you know, you had, you had it five months ago and knew what you're, what was coming down the pipeline. Not to sound harsh, but go ahead, Rich.
Well, well, you didn't know it was coming down the pipeline, except what you didn't, the variable was this virus that created a whole lot of angst and and a whole lot of issues. You know, the only thing I'll say in this is in, you know, in in incredible times like this, some some incredible decisions need to be made. And listen, I I think everyone knows, I've been part of the FinCom on in this town for ten years and, you know, very aware of of the financials within the town. But I just feel that there are times when extraordinary circumstances supersede a fiscal responsibility. And and at the end of the day, we not, we do have to worry about dollars and cents, but we have to worry about the eighteen thousand people that live in this town as well. And look at the situation that we we are all in right now. Obviously, we're all sitting at our homes doing a meeting, which I don't think any of us ever thought that would ever happen. We have employees in town that can't go to work. You know, we've got people throughout the town that can't go to work because of a virus. And then there are people that actually put themselves in danger every day to try to help. So I I'm trying to look at this from a bigger picture. And again, kind of goes back to, from a timing perspective, I would hate for anyone in Rockland to not be able to make a payment because they're waiting on the federal government to get a check out to them. I just, I personally, I have a huge issue with that.
Yeah, I don't, uh, you know, none of us obviously have have a crystal ball and and know when when those stimulus checks are going to end up hitting. Be a lot easier decision, I guess, if we did. But we're talking today's April seventh. Rich, what's the, have you, have you seen what the latest timeline is for those those stimulus checks to hit? Yeah.
Everything I'm looking at, who who knows?
I know, I know.
You know, you just, we we don't know. Honestly, I don't think they know.
Yeah.
You know, I I do know, I I've been working with some small businesses that have been applying for the SBA and that has been a, it's it's been it has not been, I won't say it's a disaster, but it has not been good. I I have quite a few friends that that own small businesses. You know, there's thirty million businesses, two hundred and twenty five applications have been processed. But out of that, they're still waiting for their money, they were supposed to get the money the same day. That's not happening. So, you know, we also have issues with with not just homeowners, but people that own businesses in town that may be trying to get their the small business loans and can't even get them. It it's just, you know, it's not an easy answer to this. I just, I I would feel horrible if it costs people money because the federal government can't get the money out to them.
I agree. Doug, any 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 more thoughts?
No, I mean, to be honest, I I knew the conversation was going to go this way, you know, and it's completely understandable. It's a hard situation and it's, you know, it's, this is tough, some towns are doing it, some towns aren't, you know, it's the 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 state didn't require it, it's, you know, it's something that we're allowed to do if we choose, it's a local option. You know, we're we're trying to not not kind of wimp out in that, you know, we're actually giving you a very specific recommendation, but you're the elected officials and if you choose to do what you're discussing, that's absolutely fine, we'll make that happen, you know, but we want to do at least give you our recommendation.
Thanks. Attorney Clifford, you seen anything out there? John?
I think everyone is going through the same analyses. The big unknown is just what is everyone's cash flow going to look like as as this fiscal year ends and the next one starts? So I think everybody's a little tentative about doing anything that could make potentially a disastrous situation worse. So just to be clear, the board would be voting on only that provision of the law that waives penalties and interest on any bills due after March tenth. No later than June thirtieth, they still have to be paid for any interest accrued after that or penalties would be assessed after June thirtieth, is that how you understand it, Judy?
Actually, it's 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 two different things. It's, um, the first one is that the the property tax bills get extended to June one as opposed to May one. And that the excise and any other, well, it's just excise really, I really have no jurisdiction over the utility. That would be extended through June thirtieth to waive the interest after, anything after May, March tenth. So I I guess, one of the, one of the questions that I have too is what do you do with those people that have paid after March tenth?
As I understand it, the board has it as separate options to change the due dates. And they also have a separate option to basically not not assess penalties and interest. So I didn't hear any discussion from the board that they were, that you wanted to change due dates, correct?
Yeah, we we brought it up at one point, I I I mentioned about changing, well, or was not assessing penalties and interest, and in that case, it was, you know, Judy pointed out that it was essentially the same as just moving the due date.
I'm not sure that it is necessarily the same, you know, hopefully those people that can pay the bills on time will continue to pay with the existing deadlines. But those people that can't pay for the reasons the board has discussed would not be assessed penalties and interest. So I think they are two separate votes. I think the board has the option of just saying that any penalties and interest that would normally be due for any bill payable after March tenth but before June thirtieth would be waived without changing the statutory deadlines that are on all the bills that have already been sent out.
I I read it otherwise, John, and and if Biz is still there, I'd I'd like you to chime in too because the way I read it, two, two different animals. They they take, they segregate the real estate bill separate from any other billing. And they, the the regulation is specific that the real estate bill, you have, you have the option of moving it to a five one deadline to a six one deadline. The waiving, the waiving of the interest is is segregated to excise tax bills and utility bills. That's how I read it, I could, it, Biz, would you like to chime in?
Yes, if I could. According to the DOR guidelines, section seven would be changing the due dates, which is, you know, fine for the June first timeline. And as Judy said, the local option to waive the interest is pertinent to the the excise, the taxes, the abatement, sewer, water. So this affects not just the town side, but it affects the two independent operations as well. And if the community had a larger reserve fund or a larger stabilization fund, it wouldn't be an issue, we'd be in a better financial position. It's not just the waiving of the interest and penalties that we have to look at. It's the whole overall health and position that we might be in with the reduction of our local receipts. Because it's not just interest penalties, it's pretty much everything. It's permits, it's trash fees, it's ambulance fees. So in the context of compassion as a human being, yes, I think it'd be the best thing that a community who could afford it should do. However, with Rockland, there's really not a lot of financial flexibility. So Judy's option as far as people being able to apply to extend their payments, that's something that Judy can deal with, with any taxpayer who has an issue. You're waiting for your stimulus payment, it hasn't come in, pick up the phone, pick up an email, contact the collector, the collector has the authority to make agreements with the taxpayers and as Judy stated, the the town will be willing to work with people as best we can, but if we do an overall blanket, hold on the fees and extension of the date, it very well could have a a larger detrimental impact this year and for the future, which is the concern right now.
So how do we go about getting that message out to the residents from from Judy's office? I mean, she's she's staffed minimally right now to let them know that the town of Rockland would like to work with them going forward and and is willing to work with them based on financial hardship?
I would believe that's something that Judy could work with Doug and Gino to get something out on the town website, a good portal is through here. And there are, there are different avenues, but as a tax collector, Judy would be able to come up the better plan of attack for something like that. Judy?
There are different avenues that are available to us, certainly the website. We are, I expected more phone calls coming in from people once this information was out, I'm not getting that many, I'm certainly coaching people as best I can. And once any veritable decision is made, I will move forward accordingly, but there there's public service announcements, there's, they they recommended a reverse nine one one to send out, uh, the DOR said, but actually recommended towns in order to to communicate to the population a reverse nine one one. And I I think what I agree with what Biz is saying. I I don't, I don't want to to make it seem like that we're we're not compassionate or 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 in tune with everything that's going on, I certainly am, it's affected me personally as well and I am, I I I am very well aware of that, I I think that if we, if we take it with the understanding that we open the lines of communication with those people that need it and they understand that the tax collector's office is an office that they could go to to set up some semblance of a payment plan, I think it would, it would be, I think it would benefit both parties. It's a, it's a tough one, it's a tough one, I I
Judy, do you know, I mean, I I mean, do you have, do you have people that that, you know, month after month, quarter after quarter are that you're chasing and that that have a hardship, you know, traditionally, that that you know who who you're talking specifically to reach out?
I I do, and and they've already reached out to me, but I also have, we also have a lot of individuals that utilize Bill Pay. They don't use our online billing system, they use like their own bank. And they do, they go through Bill Pay and they say, drop a hundred dollars a week to the town of Rockland and a check comes in every week for a hundred dollars to the town of Rockland for their payment of their real estate taxes. We have a large number of people that utilize Bill Pay for that reason. They have the capability of setting it up in the future, risk in case they can shorten the payment, they can increase the payment. They can, they can set up the parameters any way they want, however they see fit with their bank. There are a lot of people that utilize Bill Pay for that, for that specific reason. So there's a number of of avenues that the people are 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 recognizing that are available to them that we, it, we can put that information out there and it and it and it needs to be, it it needs to be disseminated accordingly and and like I said, it it, I wish this wasn't happening. I wish this was not a decision that would have to be happening, but unfortunately, as Rich said, desperate times call for desperate measures and and we're, we're in a, we're in a place where it's a, it's a tough situation all the way around.
Just, just to clarify what the board's options are, this, the way the statute is written in sections ten and eleven, it it really is a menu approach, it's not all or nothing for the board, the board doesn't have to vote to extend all of the applicable deadlines and waive all the interest and penalties, you have a number of options to waive specific deadlines, not to waive any deadlines, you have the option to waive penalties and interest, but that's a separate vote. So it's, you know, and and you're also not obligated to decide tonight. I mean, if if we hear that this is a bigger problem, that the board, you know, you can certainly take it up at your next meeting, you could take it up at a an emergency meeting or or something along those lines, so. But you do have a number of options within this discussion to consider. Extending deadlines, waiving penalties and interest for certain payments, you may decide that you don't want to waive penalties and interest on the water department because that is a separate governmental authority. But you do have a number of options to consider, it's not all or nothing.
Okay.
So with that, I I I think we may want to hold off on this, so you know, my take on this, it'd be, if if all of a sudden the the stimulus checks all all come out in a week and, you know, unemployment gets all broken out, then I I look at this differently, you know? So I I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, to tabling this until our next meeting and then making a decision.
So I just want to ask the question. So this is what, April seventh, so our next meeting would be April twenty first. Would that be, I mean, that would be too late to make a decision on this, right, for the most part?
No, I don't believe so. I mean, if if we find that a lot of people are running late and you're here and then a lot of people are difficult, look, you can vote it, I think. I don't think there's any reason why you couldn't vote this anytime, you know, right through May, if that's what you decided to do.
All right.
I'm just, that's really just on the waiving the penalties and interest portion.
Yeah, you know, I I think, you know, both Judy and Rich, you guys have both touched upon, you know, these are unprecedented times and we're really, we're kind of, you know, hung out there to dry right now, we're not really getting in a lot of direction and the direction that we are getting is changing day by day. And and this seems like an option to, so as a no brainer, but you know, to to Biz's point, you know, we're not in a position, you know, fiscally in the town of Rockland where we have the ability to to make up this shortfall in the next fiscal year. So you know, Rich, you said it, this is all a timing thing, you know, and until we see what goes on with the payments coming in from the federal government in the stimulus package and see what goes on over the next couple of weeks, I I think, I think this has been a really good conversation, it's been really eye opening, Doug, Judy, if you guys, Biz, if you guys could send us each every single thing on this topic so that we can really so that we can really dig in and really get to, you know, have a, I think you guys have given us great, you know, ideas around it. And maybe just if we can get through it ourselves and wrap our brains around it and we can really have some solid thoughts on, for our next meeting. You know, and at least at that point, the landscape will have changed federally anyway. And we'll know what's going on with the virus at that point as well. I do want to go real quick to Mr. Mullen.
Yeah, no, and that is also, I mean, I think, I would like to move forward. Oh, you know, this whole entire conversation. I think one thing that I'm in hindsight, probably, oh, you know, oh, you know, I actually should have happened before this. Like there's a conversation about where, like our revenues are at. Oh, like, oh, you know, if you're on April 7th, I can want to get a picture. It's like, oh, you know, like in terms of really being to close out, you know, fiscal year 20, oh, what our revenues are, oh, really what we're protecting, you know, and building permits and all the things that is, you know, really possible. Because all that, I thought, oh, how we're going to be able to close up the year. Whether we're going to be able to close up the year in the black or the red. Oh, you know, in that, oh, in that vein, how really being able to continue all of the obligations that we have to, oh, like our police officers, there's our firemen and everyone else, who the town has obligations to. So I think, you know, by the 23rd of April, we're gonna, you know, I mean, even though I think we, like Doug and Biz know exactly where we are right now on April 7th, you know, I think by April 23rd, that is going to give us, like, a much, hopefully, clearer picture and hopefully the better picture of where, oh, I can tell we're coming to close out the end of the year.
Thanks, Mike. So I'll, yeah, I think tonight we hold off on the vote. I think what I would recommend and I would ask of the rest of the board is send to me what, or, you know, if you want to send it to Doug, send it to me first, send it to me and I'll forward it off to Doug. What it is, what information it is you think you need to be able to, you know, make this decision with the most amount of information you can have. And we'll continue to look at it over the next couple of weeks. And when we meet again on April 21st, we'll bring this back up. We'll make sure this is first thing on the agenda that night. Okay? And meantime, I'll, I'll just take a quick roll call. Make sure everybody's in favor of tabling this for the next meeting. Mr. Mullen? Yeah?
That's, it's Biz. Doug was frozen out, so he'll be back in as soon as he can.
Okay.
Okay.
And he's taking the minutes too, so maybe I'll give him a second.
Right, what was that? Larry? I know he's muted.
There he is.
Okay, Doug's back. Okay, so I'll take it just a quick, just a quick roll call. Make sure that the rest of the board is okay with tabling this and gathering more information to make a more informed decision when more information is available to us. Mr. Mullen?
Yes, about table.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan? Larry, you got to hit on mute.
Can you hear me?
We can now.
All right. I wanted to say a couple of things regarding the whole situation and stuff. And I guess I was muted, but, you know, we got Judy, Doug, Biz, and everybody working together on this. And they know the ramifications of what's going to happen to us if we delay the collection of the money. I mean, I think we, I guess we should talk about it and think about it some more. But, you know, we pay them to figure things out for us. And, you know, we're responding with our hearts, which is a nice thing. But we also have to respond with our responsibility hats because as the leaders of, have to provide for the whole minority of the town. And yeah, work with that minority, pay on time, to get them into programs where they could pay on however they're going to pay. And it wouldn't be as much all at once and yada yada. When the smoke clears here and budgets and all the money that we had prepared for our budget isn't going to be there and the state numbers may be down and we're going to have to refigure the whole budget again. And, you know, and we don't want to have any more shortfall. We're going to have to lay off people. And, you know, if you talk about it, you're going to say, well, the school's going to lay off 70% of, about 30%. And I'm sure that they're not going to want to talk about laying people off and anything other either. So, you know, I think we should support our financial team. I understand the, you know, I've been in the people business for my entire life and been with people and mostly at tragic times. And sometimes you just have to let it be and go through it and just, and, you know, there are things that we can work out with those people who can't pay versus people that have already, you know, my taxes are paid because my money's in the bank. I'm very fortunate. I get everything all set. And the majority of the people at the town are probably that way. And those people who aren't that way have been working out plans with Judy and those and our financial people. So I'm a little hesitant to put any delays on anything because I think that our people can take each individual case for what it is. And if there's, you know, if the stimulation check hasn't come, then they can, there's something that Judy can work out with them and say, well, they say it's going to come next week. If you pay by next week, there'll be no penalty or something on an individual basis rather than a blanket job. But you do a blanket job and then likely there'll be those people who they take advantage of it, who don't need to take advantage of it. I don't know. It's a tough situation, but in the long run, our responsibility is to, you know, 18,000 Rockland residents and to do what's best for the most. And I understand the individual problems, but, you know, the democracy in our country, you always talk about individual rights, but our democracy is that the majority rules and the majority, you know, of the people in the town of Rockland are pretty solvent and those who aren't, work on their condition with the people who they have to pay. So I don't think we should not listen to our people. I understand that, I understand that they have compassion too. But, you know, they're sitting there looking at these numbers and going, you know, why the face? You know what I mean? And I think that we have to really, as a group, as an executive branch, have to make an executive decision that says the entire town is paramount and we will work with those people who we have to work. But in order to blanket pardon, I won't use, I'll just use the word pardon as a word, but to use that would be, I think it would be a mistake. I don't think that it's in the best interests of a lot of people. And it would cause more disorganization, more disruption than the other way around. And that's my opinion. And I will vote to put it on for a couple of weeks because I don't think it's necessary. And two weeks down the line, this is going to take a lot of difference, to me, anyway. I just, I just think we pay these people to make these decisions for us and we'd be damn fools if we don't listen to them. We listened to the police chief. He said, you know, I don't need that place open because. So, and now Judy and Doug and the whole package, you know, we'd like to do this, but, you know, the big but in there, and that big but, we don't want to come back and bite us on our buts. And so I just think that we really should think long and hard about making any blanket, blanket decision. I think that, again, you know, I don't know anybody who's any more compassionate than Judy. I don't know anybody who's, I don't know Doug well enough to, in the long run, to say, you know, if he has any meaning, speak to him. But he doesn't seem like the type of guy that wants to spread people are doing the going. And neither do I. Paramount, the town being saved is paramount because what good is it if we have to start laying off because we don't have money? That's my big, we've done so much to advance the town of Rockland that, you know, this setback could be a major derailment to the town of Rockland going forward into the future. I hate my hell to go backwards. And, you know, and I want to avoid that at all.
So Larry, I think, I think everybody, everything you said is entirely correct, you know? And I think we all agree with you. And we all trust Doug, Judy and Biz with their recommendations. And I think the only, the only thing that is the hesitation tonight is that we don't have to make the decision tonight. Because, and I think the stimulus checks hit. When the federal stimulus checks hit, if they hit tomorrow, then the decision is easy. 100%, you know, 1 million percent. It's very easy if those checks hit. But to Rich's point, we don't know what's going to go on. And if we don't have to make that decision tonight, as Attorney Clifford pointed out, I think every single one of us is ready to make the decision. And it's going to be a hard decision for all of us. And I think we're all ready to make the decision for what's best for the town of Rockland. But if we can buy a little bit more time and we can see what goes on with the federal government, I think that that would be.
I'm awful putting it off. I'm awful putting it off. A question about that. I just wanted to make sure that I was on mute and I wasn't able to, to be able to get my point across. I just wanted to get my two cents with them because I think this is, you know, we had a crossroads a couple of years ago with all the problems. And now we're at another crossroads that could potentially cause more devastation than the last problem. So, you know, let's, we see that it's coming and we want to make the right decision. That's all.
Mr. Penny?
Mike, just a clarification. So I'm not, I'm not looking to delay the payment of the bills. So I think Larry had mentioned about delaying it. That's not what I'm looking to do. And we've got 80% of the town that are on automatic payment through their mortgage company. So we're talking about a potential 20% of homeowners or business owners in town. The only thing that I've talked about in just about real estate taxes, that's it, is potentially waiving the interest and penalty for a 30-day period. That's it. Nothing, nothing more. Doesn't, doesn't change the due date. It doesn't do anything else. In those 80% that are automatically paid and those ones that Judy had mentioned that go on automatic payment, those would happen. So I just want to make sure that everyone was clear of what, what I was proposing.
I'm not, you know, something I think that with this two-week time period that we have, that each one of us should take the time to speak with Doug, Biz, Jen and, you know, understand completely, and Judy, and understand completely what all the differences are, what all the new rules are. And then if it changes again tomorrow, probably that too. But I think that each one of us should, you know, Doug and the team came to us tonight and said, you know, here's what we decided. Okay, so now it's on top of us tonight. This is what they decided and, you know, we want to make a decision. So I think that we should all make sure that we speak to each one of them individually or as a group, you know, about what they think the final ramifications and what the whole deal is going to be. So that, so that two weeks from now, when we come back, we can make our decision and base it on strong fact and strong financial, that's all. I just, I'm just afraid, I don't want to go backwards. And I'm afraid that, you know, if this goes on much longer and they're talking May 4th, then if they're talking two weeks now that the peak is, we're still on the peak for two weeks. So there's no way in God's earth that we're going to do anything on May 4th, as far as I can see. So it's going to be on we go. And we got to make sure that we're solvent because it's, we don't want, like I said, we don't want to have to be cutting and cutting and cutting again. I've been doing enough of that in my lifetime and I just, I really don't want to go through that again. So I would like to just make sure that we understand what our financial team's plan is totally so that, and where the differences may lie and what the actual facts and figures are so that we can, you know, we can make a really informed decision. You know, I'm all for the people of the town of Rockland and we help all that we can. But we have to, we have to make sure that we're there to help them.
Thank you, Larry. I agree. So we will table this for our next meeting first on the agenda. Okay? Moving on. Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Biz. Thank you, Doug. Doug, were you set with where you were in your presentation?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Looks like my internet kind of conked out for a minute, but I'm glad the rest of you were able to continue. So I apologize for that. Yeah, that was really all I had. And I, you know, I feel badly because I knew this was going to be a difficult discussion. I, for all the obvious reasons, and I feel badly for Wayne and Rich that I didn't suggest doing the agenda in a different order and get them up first. So I'll just, I'll end it there and we can move on.
Okay, next on the agenda, community development, CDBG. Waiver of affordable housing restriction for 124 West Water Street. Lea subordination request, case 14-176E/R-201 and other CDBG requests not reasonably anticipated if necessary. Wayne Dow.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. You guys obviously have a lot bigger issues on your plate than what I'm bringing to you, but I appreciate you taking them up tonight. The first thing I have before you tonight is an individual who participated in the housing rehab program as an investor owner. There are additional requirements on investor owners through the housing rehab program. The big one being they have to sign an affordable housing restriction. That affordable housing restriction gets recorded at the registry of deeds and runs with the property upon sale. So even if they sell the property and pay back the loan that we gave to them, their property is still encumbered with this affordable housing restriction, which in the case of a typical multi-unit rental property would not be a big deal. This is a little bit of a different situation. This is a situation where a gentleman purchased a home for his son's family to live in. So it is a single-family home. Technically, right now, it can only be sold as a rental property. The gentleman is, his son's family situation has changed. I think you've seen his letter requesting this waiver. In addition to all of this, he only got about $5,000 worth of assistance from the program. It was an emergency heating project that we did there. Because he was an investor owner, he had to pay 50% of the project cost. So the lien we have against his property is just over $5,000. It seems like a little bit of an outlier case for this type of situation. I don't see the one downside to waiving the affordable housing restriction. And this is kind of ironic because we just gave this information to Jen when she was recently updating the subsidized housing inventory, is that with an AHR against a property, it does count as a single unit on the town's subsidized housing inventory. But given the other extenuating circumstances here, I think it's a reasonable decision for the board to vote to waive this AHR. You will still get your repayment of the deferred payment loan. Not to mention, even with the town's approval of the waiver, this still has to go to DHCD because they're a third-party signatory to that AHR. So at the end of the day, they could decide to reject it. But the process needs to start with you at the local level.
Okay, I'll, any questions from the board? Mr. Mullen?
No, I don't have any.
Mr. Penny?
No, I've always gone with Wayne's recommendations, so.
And Ms. Nyman?
I agree with Wayne's recommendation as well.
And Mr. Ryan?
Ditto.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. So I'll entertain a motion, uh, to, uh, waive the affordable housing restriction for 124 West Water Street. Mr. Mullins? Oh, I, I'll entertain a motion rather.
One more.
I think a motion.
All right. I got four first. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, Mr. Mullins?
Yes. Thank you, Wayne.
Snidman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Next one?
Thank you. Uh, the next one, uh, this is something we deal with all the time. It's a, uh, request for subordination. We have an individual who's actually participated in the housing rehab program twice, um, over two program years, one Rockland FY14 grant, the other one, the joint Holbrook-Rockland grant in FY16. She's seeking to refinance to lower her current mortgage, uh, interest rate. This refinancing will also allow her to do away with her, uh, mortgage, uh, insurance. So her monthly payment is going to drop significantly, which is always, um, important to someone who's a low modern income individual. At the end of the day, all, um, all of the debt against the property still only comes up to be 80% uh, against the appraised value of the property. Uh, I feel that's, that's enough security for the board to move forward comfortably and, um, approving the subordination.
Okay. Uh, any questions? Mr. Penny?
No.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mr. Ryan?
Nope.
Mr. Mullins?
No, I don't have any either. Thank you, Wayne.
Okay. I'll, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve the lien subordination.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All is in favor. Mr. Mullins?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And Mr. Ryan? Okay. And myself. Thank you, Wayne. Next. Any other, uh, CDBG requests?
Um, I'll leave it up to Jen if you want to discuss, uh, what we were talking about mo- most recently, or that can wait till another day if you want.
Jen, you're on mute. Still on mute. Face bar? There you go, Jen.
That. So i- in reference to the rental assistance, Wayne?
Yeah. If you wanted to touch on that tonight, or if you want to let that wait for another day.
So I'm maybe wait because we actually did, I did bring it up and explained it at the last selectmen's meeting. Um, I think we just, we will need the board to vote on that. I'm waiting to hear back from the CPC, um, relative to getting it scheduled and on their agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, then I did want to let the board know that, um, the CARES Act, the stimulus package that came out included quite a bit more money for the community development block grant program. That money is going to be distributed, you know, um, by the Department of Housing and Community Development. They haven't said how or when, uh, but they did reach out to me and the other folks who administer these programs, asking us if we have had any requests from client, uh, communities about what their needs are. What, the feedback I gave to DHCD was, um, there's going to be an increased demand for social services. We're already seeing that, whether it's food pantries or, um, organizations who provide emergency assistance to individuals and homelessness, uh, or shelter support. I also mentioned that, uh, yeah, in relation to what Jen just mentioned, that there are a number of communities who have approached, uh, COG about trying to do something along the lines of rental assistance for low and moderate income households who are in danger of becoming homeless. And I've also had a client community reach out to me to develop a program to provide assistance to small businesses, actually what you call micro businesses, um, to perhaps provide grant to pay for two or three months of their rent and utilities to help, you know, especially if they've been closed as a non-essential business, to get them through this period so that, uh, on the back end of it, they can get up and running again without carrying all this debt forward. So there is a lot of talk about additional money, additional assistance. As I learn, um, more details, I'll be sure to pass them along, uh, to Jen and Doug.
Awesome. Thank you, Wayne. Anybody have any further questions for, uh, for Wayne? Mr. Ryan? Larry? I hear you now.
Thanks. I've been muted. Uh, uh, thanks, Wayne. That's all I want to say. You're doing a great job as always.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Mullins?
No, I'm all right. Thank you, Wayne.
Mr. Penny?
No, Wayne, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Nyman?
No, thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome, Kara.
Uh, Judy, did you have something you wanted to pass on?
I think she might've jumped off.
Okay. So she got a text saying, can you call on me? So I thought it was for this meeting. So, all right. Thank you, Wayne. Appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you. Good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, the capital plan update and overview. Capital planning committee chairman, Rich Harris. Rich, you still with us?
I'm still here. Um, okay. So I believe I sent the capital plan. You should all have a copy of it. If you need me to, I'm prepared to share it, share my screen with you, um, or I can just give you a summary. We went through approximately 51 projects, um, meeting with all of the, um, departments over the last four months. Uh, the plan was finalized just this, yep, that's it, Larry. Very good. Okay. You got it. Um, we just finalized it, uh, March 23rd. Uh, we were actually the, the first committee to, to do one of these, uh, video conference meetings, uh, to finalize the, finalize the plan. But working with Doug and, and all the different department heads, um, we got all of the, uh, projects and all the, um, estimated, uh, projects over the next five years to build out the capital plan. And as I said, it, it spans approximately 51 projects right now. We, I presented a preliminary plan to the finance committee. Uh, I've also forwarded this, this plan to, uh, Doug as well as Biz. And it shows for fiscal year 2021, uh, capital projects totaling, uh, 5.586 million dollars.
Doug?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, you know, I've really enjoyed working with Rich on the capital committee. You know, it's, um, there's a lot of things that are done a little differently in Rockland compared to the town I was at before and the, the capital process, capital process is one of them. But I, I really like the process here. I think they do an excellent job. They're, they're really diligent. You know, Rich does an excellent job in the way that they organize their scoring and, uh, you know, make sure that everything is, uh, included on the plan before we go to town meeting. And I still have some learning to do on my end to make sure that I'm looping in the right people. But I just wanted to, you know, big picture, just kind of support, uh, the process they're going through and I have appreciated working with them.
Thank you, Doug. Mr. Mullins? Any comments?
No, no. Everything, oh, really looks awesome, but I mean, in terms of, oh, what are we going to be able to fund, Doug? Is that on hold? I don't like really until we see where we are, um, going to town meeting.
Yeah. You know, it's, I think I might've mentioned this at the last meeting. It's, um, putting the, you know, the financial impact on individuals and the loss of life, which are obviously the loss of life is the most important thing. But just professionally for me, and I, I know for Biz, this has just been so disappointing because we, we just got our first budget, you know, endorsed by the finance committee and everything was balanced and good to go with a, an excellent list of capital projects that really would have, uh, produced a lot for the town. And to answer your question, Mike, yeah, you know, everything is going to be up in the air as we reevaluate our revenues. We may very well have to put a lot of these off and dip into free cash to be able to balance the budget in addition to a reserve fund and stabilization fund. So, uh, more to come on that for sure.
Okay. Rich?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rich Penny?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, Rich Harris, uh, great job in, uh, great job by the committee. And I actually look forward to this committee becoming more impactful. And I think what, what the initial, um, thought process when this was put together, uh, that, that you guys are much more involved in the process. So I'm looking forward to that.
We try to, um, as we meeting with each of the departments, try to, try to pick their brains as far as, you know, don't just tell me what you need now, but, you know, what do you think you're going to need next year or the year after and the year after so that we can try and get that bigger picture as far as, you know, what you have coming down the road.
No, I agree. I, I, I think unfortunately it's, the history has been a little more reactionary and I'm hoping that, that this committee actually becomes more, I, I think you guys will be, become more proactive and be a bigger part going forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Nyman?
Looked that up until a few of their meetings, um, this year, and they always do a great job. So thank you to you, Rich and your committee.
Thank you, Kara. Mr. Ryan?
You know, it's a, it's a painstaking, uh, job to do this. I was a liaison to the committee when they were, when the last group was there and, and it wasn't probably as, as an important, it was building in its importance to the town. And now we understand the, the, the need and the usefulness of it. So, um, it's a tough job. You guys are doing a great job and we look forward to, uh, implementing all these things at some point in our, our future. Thank you all for doing it. That's all I get to say.
Thank you, Larry. Rich, I just want to, you know, echo their sentiments and thank you and your committee for, uh, for putting together a, a, a good capital plan. Hopefully, uh, at some point down the road, uh, in the near future, we're able to execute, execute the items on the plan. Thank, thank you very much, Rich. Sorry to keep you waiting so long tonight.
No problem. Thank you.
Bye bye.
Just a quick question, Mike. Do we need a vote to accept the capital plan?
Uh, yeah. You know what? You might as well. Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All is in favor. Mr. Mullins?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And myself. Unanimous. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving right along. Next on the agenda, other new business not reasonably anticipated. Mr. Lap?
None.
None? Okay. Uh, old business, annual town election update.
Yeah. So I, you know, I, with all the rest of this, I, I, I plan on keeping this, uh, on all the agendas going forward to the extent that we have an update on, uh, on any of these items, town meeting, um, town election, the budget. Uh, as you know, you know, you, you postponed the town election and the, the annual special town meeting. I think we can still wait a little bit longer until we set that date. I'm still hoping we can do it, uh, in June before the end of June, before the fiscal year ends. I do think that would be best, although part of the flexibility the state allowed is to allow towns to have a town meeting after June 30th and go forward with those 112 budgets. But hopefully we'll be able to do it in late June. My, my main point again on the budget, just as Mike Mullins alluded to a moment ago, is that, uh, you know, we're looking at the numbers closely right before this meeting. Biz was emailing me with some of the latest revenues from the most recent month we have in and, you know, they're, they're concerning, but, you know, I don't want to bring anything to you yet. We're going to keep looking at it and as soon as we have some more concrete estimates and, and things we need to do to bridge the gap, we're going to present those to you. So I don't, I really don't have any, um, numbers, uh, to go over tonight or any other as far as the election and town meeting. I'm just shooting for, for late June, but Biz is here. So I do want to give her an opportunity if she has something she wants to add on, on that, it might be helpful.
Um, I don't have anything to add at this point. Just like you said, we'll have to start reworking the budget, um, once we have a little bit more direction.
Thanks, Biz. All right. Next on the agenda, town administrators' report and correspondence. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. Um, you know, I'm going to keep this quick because it's been a long meeting tonight. You know, the, the big picture I wanted to highlight is, you know, we really are going to have to keep business rolling. And one small example of it was, as you spoke out with Wayne at CDBG with the items, um, this just came up very recently where a resident called me, um, at town hall and we were able, you know, a few phone calls and emails and Zoom meetings to communicate and, uh, and to get this on the agenda. So we're, we're all, all the departments are working hard to keep business rolling. Three quick things I thought I'd update you on. Uh, one is roadwork projects, uh, with Dave Taylor and the highway department. You know, it's certainly a difficult time, but, uh, as far as doing roadwork, it's actually a good time for the economy. So down the streets around the, uh, you know, he's going to try to keep things rolling even better than he normally would have to try to take advantage of law, um, in the economy. So they'll make very sure to follow all the, the best practices with social distancing and make sure they're following all those, all those guidelines. But infrastructure is certainly critical, um, so that they're going to keep roadwork projects going and you'll see some work on Upper Union Street, uh, happening soon. Uh, the next item was the McKinley School feasibility study, which we talked about before, uh, originally at tonight's meeting. If none of this had happened with the pandemic, uh, you would have gotten a very thorough , uh, report from the architect. We've, we've pushed everything off. I'm now hoping for, uh, May 19th, through the medium like this, through a Zoom meeting, we can have the architect prevent, present the final report. We've been continuing to work with them, do Zoom meetings. And, you know, it's, uh, obviously anything financial is exponentially more difficult now, so I'm not going to sugarcoat it. But at least we're going to get them excellent information, um, with the study that, that the firm is doing. And I think you'll be impressed with their work. And then lastly, um, as you saw, we issued an RFP to sell a very small portion of land, 327 Wayma Street that the town acquired from a prior discontinuance or realignment of a state road. We were able to continue through that RFP process even though we're closed. We did receive one proposal. Uh, I, I've looked at it preliminarily. It looks to be responsive, uh, to me. I, I think it, um, I think it's appropriate that, uh, I present it to you. Uh, I'll have a final look with, with John Clifford before then, but I would recommend that at our next meeting, we actually do an executive session, either before and before or after the meeting, uh, for you to, to look at it, talk about it and if you're ready to make a decision. We're keeping that rolling as well. And, uh, other than that, you know, same as last time, I just want to thank all our staff, um, for making themselves available to work in these very difficult times and doing our best to keep things going. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by the individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the board of selectmen and the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullins?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mike. Ms. Nyman?
I don't have anything. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Penny?
Just, uh, thanks to everyone who continues to, uh, to work and do their job and everyone be, uh, be safe and smart out there. Just uh, thanks to everyone who continues to uh, to work and do the job and everyone be uh, be safe and smart out there.
Thank you, Rich. Mr. Ryan?
I would love to thank everybody in the town hall who shows up for work. Um, all the work that uh the financial people have been doing. Um, it's been very difficult to say the least, but uh, it seems like everybody has a pretty good attitude uh toward it and uh they're practicing the, you know, this spatial distancing and all that business. And now it, it's a good thing. I'm, I'm really, really, really proud of the town of Rockland because um, we have a responsible um workforce, very good workforce. And I, I want to, I think they should all be, if you see any of them, uh, make sure you say thank you to them because they deserve everything that we can give them. And that includes Doug, Jen and Biz and, and um Stacy because they're holding a place together and doing a great job.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, yeah, I, I don't, I don't have much. Uh, obviously, this has been a, a long meeting. We, we've got a lot of things that, that uh unfortunately, we find ourselves talking about today that we, we didn't plan for, uh, obviously a few months back. Uh, this should have been us really hitting our stride with a, with an approved budget and, and town meeting warrant and, and really just kind of sitting back and, and watching everything fall together and uh, and fine tuning that warrant and being ready for town meeting in May. Uh, unfortunately, that's not the world we live in anymore. Uh, this, uh, the virus is, is very real. Uh, we're, we're seeing a lot of great efforts by residents in, in trying to continue to socially distance themselves. And I know it's, I know it's, it's not easy. Uh, we're not used to having, you know, certain freedoms restricted. I see it every day a- at, at my job. Uh, it, it seems as though uh more and more people are wearing masks, but, you know, more and more people are not fully understanding uh the distancing portion of it, you know? Uh, it's a new normal and, and we can't continue to go on as we, we went. And uh, my recommendation would just be to follow the recommendations of, of the governor and, and the federal government as well and the CDC. And, you know, we'll get through this together. Uh, like I said last week, uh, Rockland, uh, this is a lot bigger than Rockland. Uh, but if we stay together, we follow the direction of, of our community leaders, uh, we'll get through this and we'll come out stronger. None of us have a crystal ball. None of us know what's gonna happen down the road. Uh, you know, hopefully, hopefully this ends very quickly and we can get back to business as usual and it won't affect us for years to come. So, with that, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion?
I have a motion. Second? Larry, was that? Okay. All those in favor? Mr. Mullins?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman? Kara?
It's already gone.
All right, yes.
Uh, Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
All right, and myself. Uh, thank you. Uh, tonight's meeting is adjourned. Um, stay safe, be healthy, Rockland.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Good night, John.